Roll call for the City Council meeting of February 17th, 2016 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski. Mr. Witherspoon is absent, he's being honored over Gannon tonight. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Excuse me, we would remember all those in our community less fortunate than we are, all of those that have been negatively impacted, which is I guess all of us by the violence in our community, those who have lost loved ones, and even those family members who have perpetrators who have taken life in our community. Let's remember each and every one of us in that way. Also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the council meeting of February 3rd, 2016, and bills for payment on February 12th and February 19th, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky.
Okay, are there any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on with Citizens to be Heard. Our first citizen to sign up was Mr. Randy Barnes.
My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. My subject today is $81,732 contract employees, friends, and family. If you had a chance to see, since we met last, the Jamestown, New York Police Department instituted body cameras, and set in there they were $495 apiece. So instantly, in my mind, I thought, when Council gave James Clem $12,000 a year, come down because he was friends of, there was four people that voted for him, and let me read those names, those four people that voted to give Mr. Clem $12,000 a year for two years, and those were Councilpeople Witherspoon, Kunsel, Jones, and Winarski. Instead of giving Mr. Clem $12,000 a year for two years, $24,000, they could have bought 48 body cameras. So I'm thinking, what would have been, what was the more wise choice? To give this retiree $1,000 a month because he was a friend of those four council people? Because we know that he was going to go ahead and digitally preserve these records, which he told us earlier in August, that the records would be all digitally preserved by the end of last year. And we did learn in this past year and a half that to digitally preserve the records, someone had to make a phone call to Prillo Enterprises at Eighth and Parade and ask them to come over and get the microfilm and digitally preserve it. So I'm not sure if spending $24,000 of the taxpayers' money, who are these four council people, who were Jones, Witherspoon, Winarski, and Kunsel, decided that spending $24,000 for somebody to make a phone call was better than having that $24,000 to use within the community to benefit all the citizens. Because from what I can see, $24,000 benefited one citizen, that would be retiree Clem. But the $24,000 could have spent a lot of other ways, whether it be on the Jobs for Kids program, whether it be on body cameras, whether it be on ammunition for our police officers to train with. A lot of things could have been done with $24,000. But I guess in those four council people's mind, they thought $24,000 out of a, well, $12,000 a year out of a $70 million budget is really nothing. And this Mr. Clem, who worked and earned a $69,000 a year pension, worked for 47 years, he deserved that $12,000 a year, $1,000 a month. Because those four people that voted for it was councilpeople Jones, councilperson Witherspoon, Winarski, and Kunsel. And while you may be tired of hearing about this, I for one am not tired of talking about it. And I think as long as one of those four people remain on council, we'll probably continue to hear about this. Because it's an example of bad, good council people gone bad. Because when good council people are elected, they all have the best intentions. But somehow, when they get into this building, they think that $70 million budget, well, $1,000 a month through our friend Mr. Clem, that's not, that's nothing. I mean, what can you do with $1,000 a month? Well, you can buy two body cameras with $1,000 a month, or you can pay Mr. Clem to pick up the phone and call Prillo Enterprises and say, "Come and get the microfilm." Because we've got to have it digitally preserved. So I think as long as one of those four council people remain on council, then we're going to continue to talk about this when the need arises, maybe the twice a month that I'm able to get here. Because I think the taxpayers out there need to know that, they need to be watching and listening and paying attention to what these council people do every meeting. Because these little things slip through the cracks. It's 20 grand here, 30 grand there, $10,000 here. And I think our taxpayers and our city deserves better. You know, it's funny, we have a real gem, and maybe I'm one of the last people getting on board because people have talked about what we have in our city. But as I hear people, my customers that live 40, 50, and 60 miles away, I had a person the other day tell me, he went, "There's always something going on in Erie." And he's right, whether it be at the bayfront, whether it be at the arena, but there's things going on here, and we need to make sure that we're providing these tourists a safe place to come and visit. And again, whether it be body cameras or more policing, I think we have to ask our city council people, put your friends and family aside, and don't be spending money like $1,000 a month giving to retiree because he's a nice guy. Because he stayed on an extra year when Mr. Winarski said, "I need you to stay on an extra year."
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Up next is, Citizens to be Heard is Amy Kopetour. She did call in and say she was unable to make it yet, or today, so we'll open it to the citizenry.
Richard Wagner, 42nd and State. The Erie Times devoted 44 pages this past Sunday to Erie and its economy and its growth. The one thing that seemed to be missed by the Times was that you have to admit you have a problem. They spent a lot of time soft-soaping the truth. Out of that entire 44 pages, there was one comment by a very important businessman in Erie, that being Terry Kavanaugh, the CEO of Erie Insurance, and I quote, "Erie would be better off if we had one county government. Get rid of the city and the county and put them all under one heading. This is not a statement on the individuals who hold these jobs, but if we could combine all of this under one effective organization, that would be very powerful." And that came from Erie Insurance. Everyone should remember that this building we are all in doesn't belong to the people that work in it. It really belongs to the 60% of us who pay property taxes. So when I see a group of concerned taxpayers come down with a concern and some questions, I ask myself, why is there this disregard? Why is there this disrespect for their concerns? We chased the children with balloons out of the room. We moved a harmless portrait of Monsignor McBride out of the room. And all the while the citizens were expressing their concerns, you sat there in silence. And then when the vote was called and there was some grumbling in the audience, the President silenced the crowd. In his sergeant-at-arms, Mr. Witherspoon called for the chambers to be empty. Government isn't working for those that are paying for it. Let me repeat that. Government's not working for the people that are paying for it. What in the world are you people thinking? You all need to remember, people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. January 10th in the Times, Mr. Martin, a reporter with the Times, was talking about the deal in Texas with GE, and how Ms. Smith from Develop Erie and Ms. Green from the Erie Economic Development Board said that it was impossible with the tools available to our city and county to compete with Texas. I beg to differ. We have made a decision in the Erie area to develop tourism as our primary economic driver. And we have spent an equal amount of tax money on securing a convention center, two hotels, and three parking ramps in that area. I strongly believe if we hadn't been led down that road, that we could have used all the resources and tools available to create a more vibrant community, not dependent on tourism, but instead manufacturing. I want to point out something else that's very important when we're talking. I hear politicians say they can't create jobs, but let me point to two significant events in the past six months. GE and their corporate headquarters told politicians in Connecticut, "If you proceed down this road of taxation, you will leave us no other choice but to leave Connecticut." GE is now moving to Boston, soon to be followed by Travelers Insurance, which gave the politicians in Connecticut the same warning. Now let's look east, 40 miles to Dunkirk. Governor Cuomo just announced that a sleepy city of 12,000 people will build a 300,000-square-foot manufacturing facility and employ 900 people. You see, politicians can create jobs. In Erie, we've given the task of creation of jobs to the authorities. That will never bring prosperity to our area. Speaking of tourism, whenever I go anywhere, I always enjoy reading the newspaper wherever I'm at. I like to compare the city I'm in to the city I live in. What do you think a visitor to Erie would think of the last three issues of the Erie Times? Shootings, knifings, bankrupt schools, more shootings, robberies, rapes? Do you think this would be a place that they would want to come back to, or a place that they would want to, or they would want to stay away from? Maybe the way you all act, you think you're not responsible for any of this, or that maybe you could stem the tide. But I see a group of seven that wants to throw their hands in the air and do nothing, and I mean nothing to help us. The direction this council and mayor are taking us will not have a pretty end. You are making a mess of your responsibilities, and frankly, I don't know how you sleep at night. Thanks for your time.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Hello again, Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street. I'd like to start by reading the resolution that Sonia Arrington had been so kind to sponsor on behalf of the McBride Viaduct repurposing. Resolution, "That the city solicitors respectfully requested to prepare an amendment to the agreement with Trans Systems Corporation Consultants to Gateway Center Suite 2050, 603 Stanwick Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15222 as follows. Trans Systems shall include in their work and as their very first task to correct some of the inadequacies of the LR Kimball study by providing a thorough engineering and cost analysis to repurpose the McBride Viaduct structure as a pedestrian and bicycle-only bridge. This study will consider that the structure will simply be repaired, restored, to provide an adequate and safe pedestrian bicycle bridge accommodation as it currently functions." So we're not talking about building something and they will come, it's already doing this. I want to touch base, we were disappointed to hear that it didn't get a second. I understand it, it may be because it's being reviewed by the solicitor. But I'd like to point out a few very poignant things about this. One is that the idea that it's a done deal is never true. There's always amendments and termination clauses in design contracts. They're made to be that way because oftentimes, people don't know everything when they get into a contract. So there's mechanisms to adjust things. We're working tirelessly to give council mechanisms they can use to get themselves back in the game when they were so rudely bumped out of the game by administration and third parties. You were elected by the people to represent us, and here people outside of yourself are telling you, "No, you have nothing to do with this, you have to approve it." To me, that's a great affront to the dignity of the city council. And we're trying to give you mechanisms at which you can push back on those kinds of arrogant actions to step over you. We're not saying administration's bad. Administration's done a lot of good for the city. However, we don't have an absolutist idea that they're either all bad or all good. This McBride Viaduct's simply a very bad action, and we're trying to help the city to avoid doing something that's a critical injury to that part of town. I spoke to Father Jerry. I asked him, "Could you just come here and tell city council that it's not that you're against it or you don't care, it's just that you have other reasons for not being here?" And he looked at me and he said, "Adam, I've given $6,000 of my own money trying to save that bridge. I gave so much of my life, and it meant nothing. It absolutely meant nothing." He goes, "I can't spend another minute. I have the spiritual needs of my parishioners to service, I just have nothing left." And I think it's a really sad story, that a citizen advocate put so much into something and came away feeling as though it was worth nothing. I said to him, I said, "You know, Father, it feels like we're fighting something we can't see." And he said, "You know, as I'm watching you guys, it makes me feel exactly how I felt when I tried it." And he goes, "I felt the same way. I think there's something I don't know about this deal." To me, it feels like a promise was made to somebody years ago, and even though we've given a mountain of facts about what really is going on with this bridge, it's ignored because the facts will dispel the premise by which all this was proceeded upon. So we continue to work to try and get council back in the game and give you your authority and dignity back. I'd like to call attention to the actual engineering fee. A normal public's work, public works project, is around 6%. So in what they're saying this is going to cost, which is $1.72 million, that fee should only be around $110,000 bucks. We need an accounting for why they're paying these guys $580,000. When someone said that fee to me in the beginning, I said, "Yeah, but how much of that's the Viaduct?" When they said all of it, I said, "No, can't be. That's the type of fee you'd have if you were doing Buffalo Road and the Viaduct. No, that's just the Viaduct." How? So we're asking, be public about it. Put it out there, a simple breakdown. How do you get to $580,000? That makes no sense. So in addition to that, we're looking for the heroes that city council has been in the past. You know, we have one in Ms. Arrington, you know, and her story's a classic case of a hero. You know, she saw tragedy, she experienced tragedy, she did something about it, and that's what we want the other council members to do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trot.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I've given my address on the sheet. Do you need me to state it?
Please.
1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. And as I indicated the first week when I spoke, I have extensive experience in the preparation of planning documents and the analysis of alternatives. And basically, what was done in the preparation of the LR case study was, it totally lacked an analysis of the current existing use of the Viaduct. And as Councilmember Winarski indicated in the last evening meeting, that was an oversight. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but that's how I hear what you said, that you acknowledged that it could have been done and it wasn't done. It's really highly unusual and possibly not even legal when using federal funding to not have an alternative that assesses the current situation. What we're trying to do is, as Adam says, give you some ways to correct that oversight. Adding an analysis of restoration of the Viaduct to maintain the current use would bolster rather than threaten the integrity of the entire study. This additional analysis that's referred to in the resolution would correct the study. So this whole thing about the funding jeopardy should not necessarily be true, because what we're trying to do is correct the integrity of the study. I'd also like to point out that in many of the projects, probably 100% of them around the country that involve a bridge, a park, or some other structure or facility that is being continued or restored rather than sold or demolished, I don't know of any of them that involve turning that structure over to a nonprofit or a private entity. Just about all of them, and we have in this city a good example in the Leaf Arboretum, are public-private partnerships. So I hope that you all find a way to restore the credibility of the city and the integrity of this project by analyzing the current use of this bridge and restoring it to maintain its current use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tepfer. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 159942, official ordinance number 4, 2016. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 to be received as a burn criminal justice innovation grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for the VCJI Little Italy Program. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, that council file, bill number 15942, and now known as official file ordinance number 4, 2016, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky. City Council pass official file, ordinance number 4, 2016, finally by A6, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15944, an ordinance appropriating the sum of 200, that's out of order, forgive me. Council file number 15943, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Sisters of Mercy for the purchase of police equipment, fire prevention supplies, fire equipment, and winter maintenance equipment. By Mr. Kwiatowski, and seconded by Mrs. Arrington, that council file, ordinance number 15943, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky. City Council read and adopt council file, ordinance number 15943 by A6, nay zero, on Council file 15944, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 in the City of Erie Capital Improvement Fund from anticipated and unappropriated fund balance. These funds were contributed by Gannon University for the use by the Department of Public Safety. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, that council file, ordinance number 15944, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky. City Council read and adopt council file, ordinance number 15944 by A6, nay zero, on That'll take us to new business.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda, please.
We have a motion to move the balance of the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brennan. Brennan, sorry.
Any separation?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to separate item two under new business.
Item two, for separation. Seeing none.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to appoint a liaison between H.A. Burckheimer, Inc., the duly-appointed collector of Act 511 taxes for the district and the city of Erie for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for all purposes. The city of Erie hereby appoints Mr. Paul Lichtenwalter, Director of Finance, and Ms. Janet Comadeca, account as liaisons, accountant as liaison.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to amend this resolution. I have nothing against how it's written now, but I think I'd like, I feel more comfortable with the addition of our city controller on that also as a liaison. In my experience as a past city controller, it's always usually been done that way, and I just want to make sure it's a seamless, no problems, that if she needs to find out the information, she'll have the right to access it. And, you know, if we have any problems, we can always go to her or the administration.
We have a motion to amend, to include the city controller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none.
By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Jones, to amend this resolution to add the city controller as additional liaison. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
So Mr. Zack, do we have to vote on the amendment separately and then vote on the new resolution, or no?
Vote on the amendment separately.
Yes. So we have to, Rose, we have to vote on that one more time, then?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want me to read it again, Mr. President?
For the record.
Okay. With the amendment?
Please.
Okay. "Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to appoint a liaison between H.A. Burckheimer, Inc., the duly-appointed collector of Act 511 taxes for the district and the city of Erie for the express purpose of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes. The city of Erie hereby appoints Mr. Paul Lichtenwalter, Director of Finance, and Ms. Janet Comadeca, account liaisons, and as amended, to add the city controller as an additional liaison. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Mersky." And that will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, committee reports?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to thank the Sisters of Mercy for their generous contribution once again to the city of Erie. It's been my pleasure while I was controller to see them contribute every year, and this has probably gone on, I'm guessing, well over 15 years now. And if we had more groups like this that did this, it'd be a great day for the city. I mean, they hand us basically a check and they allow the chief of police, the chief, the fire chief, and the public works director to decide where to spend it. And in the past, we've bought everything from plow blades to oxygen tanks and masks for the firemen, to vests for the police officers. So I want to thank the Sisters of Mercy, and I know they don't like this, but they deserve our thanks. I'd also like to pay public tribute to the police officer who reacted the other day while on his way home. We all hear that police officers serve 24/7. And in the real world, that would be perfect, but we all know that's not the case. You know, my father was a police officer, and he always told me, you know, he served 24/7, but it would have been easy for that officer to drive home. 24/7, but it would have been easy for that officer to drive home and just forget about it. But he didn't. And he put his life at risk, and he did a great job for the city. And I got to thank him publicly, and I hope we can do something from later as a council. I know he doesn't expect it, but it's a great, it's a great thing when people on their way home and could easily look the other way, decide to take and do something that's above and beyond the call of duty. And I also attended the Blighted Property Review Committee the other day, and it was a very interesting meeting. That followed my tour around the lower west side of Erie, around Fourth and Walnut, and also around the area of East 25th, near Ash. I mean, it's an eye-opener that, you know, the condition of some of the properties, they have a job ahead of them. And I, for one, as a councilman, was kind of appalled at what I saw. We have a lot of work ahead of us. And if they were offended by some of my comments, so be it. But, you know, I'm going to call them as I see them, and we have a lot of work, and I'm proud to say some of the members on that committee are doing a great job now, and I think we'll get to the bottom of a lot of our problems. I'd also like to report that I attended the aggregate board pension meeting, the quarterly meeting of the group as a whole. And the public's always concerned of the shape of our pension funds, and we read about how bad or how good they are. But our fund, for the last year to date, ranks number seven, which means out of 100 similar things, there's 93 below us. That's not bad. For the last quarter, which many people would call one of the most challenging quarters in the market at the time, we ended 15th, which is not bad, for judging us by public funds. We're not speculative, we're not conservative, we're talking about a fund that's like 60/40 balance. So we do a pretty good job. Now, we've been improving as the years go by, and I want to assure the public that no matter what they read in the paper or elsewhere, that board is doing a great job against what they have to deal with. It's a down market, but we are doing well, and we actually ended on the plus side, which, compared to a lot of similar plans, that didn't happen. And that'll finish my report, just, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quatowski. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have meetings next week with the Port Authority and zoning, so I'll report on those meetings at the next meeting. I attended two events this past, this past couple of weeks. One was the downtown, the new downtown organization, the Downtown Neighborhood Association. That was on February 3rd. It was an organizational meeting for the group, it was their first meeting. And I just want to thank Amy Compratore for the leadership in organizing this new group. It was a good turnout to the meeting and a lot of good discussion on who to collaborate with and the benefits of working together to improve our downtown. The next meeting is March 2nd at 4:00 p.m., and it's again at Hans at 77th Street. I also attended the presentation for the redevelopment concept for the GF site. Good turnout, about 150 people or so. As I noted in the earlier presentation to council, I think the buildings, the roadways, and green spaces are very well thought out. There's a lot of good questions at the presentation, questions about the parking, a lot of questions about parking, green space, public use spaces, taxes, you know, questions about what makes this plan unique to Erie, what is the signature of the plan. I think now the challenge is to market the plan and find a developer. And I think a good plan is the first step in now to find a developer that's going to really be able to take the plan and really build something that's going to be good for Erie, our waterfront, and the people of Erie, for visitors, and everybody together. That will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mrs. Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Neighborhood Watch Council meeting last Tuesday night, and, you know, that was a very interesting meeting. You know, we had a lot of people from the communities talking about different things that was going on in their neighborhoods, and, you know, it's safe to say, things aren't just happening over here in the inner city on the east side, it's the west side, it's everywhere. And as I, you know, told the people there, we have to unify our community. Our community is not unified. I think our community is more divided today than it was a month ago. And it's sad. I think that all our area neighborhoods need neighborhood watches. You know, it's just sad that you can't get people to come out and volunteer to head up the neighborhood watches. But I really think if all our areas and neighborhoods had neighborhood watches, then we'll be a lot safer. You know, so that was the only one I had a chance to attend. I do the water board meeting tomorrow. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Arrington. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I guess I had a question for Mrs. Beck administration. There's been a lot of conversation around body cameras and those types of things, and I think it's a legitimate conversation to have. The one thing I did wonder if you could find an answer for me, does that constitute union issues at a certain point? What I was thinking, what made me think about it was the gift from the Sisters of Mercy, and quite honestly, part of one of the citizens-to-be-heard's comments, that around the price of certain body cameras, blah, 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 blah. And I was wondering, it's interesting, because I think there's probably a group of police officers that do a more intense job, have a more intense assignment in our community, some of the more challenging areas, on purpose. And I was wondering if we can't afford to do body cameras for all of the beat cops or officer patrol persons, those that are in the highest intensity part of the job, would it make sense to have them at least start out utilizing those body cameras? And what then made me realize, wait a minute, can we do something for one and not the other? And then it made me ask the broader question of it being a union issue in general, having to change the policy around body camera usage, et cetera. So I had, I was wondering if you could, you know, kind of give the information back on that.
I'd be happy to look into it.
Mr. Jones, just, only because I asked the question. So I do, the problem is in Pennsylvania, the wiretap law prevents you from, prevents police officers from filming inside a home. The person could then sue the city and the police officer for filming. So what Pittsburgh had to do, the only ones who use the body cameras now in Pittsburgh are their traffic cops. Their regular patrolmen are not allowed to use them per their solicitor because Pennsylvania law on wiretapping is that you can't film inside someone's home, they have the expected right to privacy.
Interesting.
And so that was the issue, the last I read on it and the last I asked. It might have changed since then, but I don't think the wiretap law changed in Pennsylvania. And I believe that Pittsburgh backed off from their regular patrolmen using them. Now only their traffic patrolmen use them.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Yeah, other than that, I have no other report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, good evening, everyone. I know Kaz mentioned Sisters of Mercy in their donation to the city. I don't know if he did actually mention again. And also, on our agenda here was $200,000 that they contributed to help with our public safety, which is, people got to understand, although a lot of these entities in town are nonprofit or are tax-exempt to a certain extent on different things, there is, comes a time, whether it be once a year, once every two years, once every three years, they do give some monies to the city to help with, whether it be public safety or just for the help running of the city, for road repairs or anything like that. So thanks, Kaz, for bringing that up, as well as thank the other nonprofits who do help in certain ways for the city. I did also attend the Erie Events Meeting Monday night, the showing the development plan, which Mr. Brennan had mentioned. I do want to thank the citizens who did attend and showed great interest. Personally, I was impressed with what the presentation was about, a multi-use development from retail business, green space restaurants. I mean, they covered really everything that I think makes it a multi-use development. It also creates short-term and long-term jobs, so when you get something like this happening down there, it's great. And like I mentioned at our last meeting, this type of development is not a tax-exempt development. They're speculating anywhere from $7 to $10 million annually for taxes. Of course, it's split up between the school district, county, and ourselves, but they are a tax revenue development, which we'd definitely like to see get generated here. I do have a meeting tomorrow. I'll follow up if anything is needed at this time, but we'll see what tomorrow meeting brings and keep everybody updated. Naturally, our EMTA saga continues with the county. There is a board meeting this coming Monday. Once again, I'll update anything there as well. Other than that, great job to our Erie fighter fires. We've had our sheriff fires these last couple of weeks, and one of the big ones was right there on East 12th Street, how you can contain a fire for as big as it was to the furniture store and save the business next to it within feet. Takes a lot of skill, a lot of commitment, but great job, keep up the good work, and we thank you for your service. With that, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Just a few things to report. I attended the Knockout Homelessness Event the other day at the Bayfront Convention Center to benefit the Erie City Mission. The work that the Erie City Mission does to help people with addiction and people who are homeless is really a remarkable effort, and it saves the city a lot of money in terms of social services, and the county a lot of money in terms of social services. The event was the sellout, it was the largest crowd that they ever had, and I want to thank the corporate sponsors, Erie Insurance and Eldorado, which is Preskyle Downs' corporate owner, for their generous donations to the Erie City Mission as well. Everyone had a great time. I also want to give recognition to the Streets Department. We received a ton of snow right before rush hour in the morning commute, and it was very challenging, and it wasn't unique to the city. The whole region, as you know, many of the county schools were closed, and there was a big accident in Mill Creek because it was just one of those things where the snow came at the wrong time, and it was when everyone was going to work. But our crews got out there, and they did their best to get on top of it as soon as they could. All plows were out, and, you know, those guys, oftentimes, you know, as council people, we get the phone calls, my street wasn't plowed, my street wasn't plowed. But those guys really worked really hard to make sure everything got done in an efficient manner and as quickly as possible, and I wanted to thank them. I did want to address a couple of things here. It was brought up during the citizens-to-be-heard that we don't listen to people, and that's just not true. We do listen. We might not always make the decision you like, but we always listen. And to address another thing, over time, not just in Erie, but across the country, we've seen a degradation of civility and decorum. And this body always strives to conduct business in this chamber with order and decorum, and we're not going to change that because someone's passionate about their issue. We won't do that because government is for the people, but we have to conduct government and have it, have some kind of seriousness and sacredness. This isn't a rally. This is a place to conduct business. And just like you wouldn't have a rally in a courtroom and they expect order, this is a place of government business, and we expect order here. So I will never apologize for that. We shouldn't be encouraging that because we've seen that degrade over time in this I think it's great to also congratulate Mr. Witherspoon. He's not with us tonight because he's being recognized by Gannon University, so we want to give him, on behalf of all of City Council, our congratulations. His decades of service, not just to Gannon University, but to the community, are an example that all of us should follow. And so with that, I conclude my report.
The controller, Ms. Dankevich?
I've got a brief report. I also attended the investment committee meeting with Kaz, and not, I know he mentioned briefly about the performance, but it was also discussed that we'll be seeking a large-cap growth manager as a result of periodic review of the asset classes that we have, just to keep the funds, you know, just to see what's out there, to see if there's anything better we can evaluate. They're also going to continue their search for adding, possibly adding, private equity and real estate. They didn't have enough information for the last meeting, but they're going to continue to do that and bring it to the next meeting. And the Water Reserve Committee also had their meeting, and they'll be part of that search for a large-cap growth manager. And I have all copies of any of the performance reviews, if anybody wants to look at them in my office, and the next meeting for Water Reserve and the Aggregate Board will be in May. So, thank you.
Ms. Dankevich, thank you, and I know you take very, that job seriously, managing those funds and monitoring them, so thank you for your efforts there. Administration, Ms. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jumping on the bandwagon that several of our council people did already, I want to thank Public Works for cleaning our streets and keeping our roads as clean as they possibly, as clear as they possibly can be, and certainly as a challenge, as you had mentioned, when the snow fell, this last big snowfall. They're out there, they're working. I know we get complaints that people's driveways are plowed in and their sidewalks are plowed in because of the speed that the plows go by. There is a process, they know what they're doing. And I know it's inconvenient, especially for some of our elderly and some of our sick neighbors, but we need to get the roads clear, we need to keep the main roadways clear to the hospitals, State Street, 26th Street, 12th Street, so the ambulance services can get there, such as the accident that we had the other morning with the school bus. Want to thank our fire department for their quick work. We've had a number of fires, small and large, over the past couple of weeks. We certainly want to thank them for the fine work that they did at Fred's Furniture, saving the structures in the neighborhood. And then, last but not least, the police department have had a number of calls, as you have said, above and beyond duty, some of them, but they have responded quickly and made arrests, and hopefully we're getting some guns off of the streets and making our community safer for everyone. To that end, I met with Rob Schultz, Schultz Marketing. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Love Erie Movement. It is going to be rebirthed. There's going to be a second coming of the Love Erie Movement, which you're going to be seeing on websites and public access television. They're asking the City of Erie, the County of Erie, a number of our businesses, schools, community partners, to really commit to be the best that we can be, whether that's as a teacher, as a government employee, as a neighbor. So you'll see those videos playing and showing, and if you have any questions, feel free to give us a call. But we really feel that it's important that we showcase all the wonderful things that we have in our community. Sometimes we take advantage of where we live, and sometimes we don't take advantage of where we live, and we get on that negativity bandwagon. So, thank you very much.
All right. With that, adjourn this meeting.
City Council adjourns at 8:23 p.m. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Quatowski, Mr. Winarski.